Second. Okay, good. And. And welcome to the November sixteenth meeting of the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board. The first item on the agenda and continued business is unlimited tomorrow. Jonathan Cohen, Tekonic Engineering, project engineer, sixty-five seventy-nine Spring Brook Avenue, site plan approval. Are they here?
They are.
This us?
There you are.
Unlimited tomorrow?
Good.
Yes.
Good evening, Andy Didi with Tekonic Engineering. Want to give you a brief update. We don't have a have a plan pulled together yet. We're still working with the applicant and the architect, the tenant to kind of try and rework the site plan to incorporate some of the suggestions, suggestions and and comments from the planning board. So we're working through that. Hopefully we'll have something to be able to present in December. We're still again working through just kind of how how the reconfigure could work.
Well, what we always try to do, we years ago, there was the barbecue place on Route nine was the Zen Dog Cafe. And there was parking in the front and the when they came to present the site plan, it was reworked to put parking in the back and have tables and chairs in the front. When your neighbor came to redo that, the co-work space, we worked with them to move parking on the side to landscape to make it very attractive. And so here's a chance, you know, as you want to make this official, what you're doing there, trying to make it look a little more attractive coming into the gateway in the village. It looks like still looks like the tax shop, something from Fort Worth, Texas, resident from Rhinebeck. So that's all we're asking to do is to try to think. I think John had some suggestions and we'll work with you and whether you can come up with it.
Okay, great. Great.
So so you're not ready to?
No, we don't have the plan yet. We're still kind of trying to figure, figure out how we could, what we could add for, you know, potential screening and that sort of thing to to help mitigate some of the board's concerns.
Great, great.
Did you find the septic system?
We did. Yeah, it's a there's a septic tank right out in front of the building and then it's just a dry well actually underneath the parking lot. So it's all it's all right there.
It's it's in the it's in the front. It's actually the front part of the building.
It is. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's under the parking lot there. Yep. So we're looking at some of the site constraints and, you know, some of the, again, just trying to figure how it could, how it could rearrange or again, screen. But we haven't, we haven't gotten there. There's, there's. Again, there's an architect involved, the applicants, the tenants, so just kind of getting everybody on the same page. We're working toward that.
Well, we're meeting on December seven. We haven't decided about December twenty-first. It's pretty close to the holidays, so I don't know if we'll meet on that day because we can meet, you know, right after New Year's. We'll see how the agenda is going and see how busy we are coming into Christmas. Usually it's pretty quiet that week anyway.
Yep.
But we will be there on December seventh. So if you want to come back then.
Okay, hopefully, hopefully we can get it ironed out by then, but we'll, we'll stay in touch with Ryan and just make sure we're we're here as soon as we can.
Have a good Thanksgiving. We'll see you on Pearl Harbor Day.
Same to you. Yeah, thanks.
New business, sixty-four twenty-two Montgomery Street, suite number eleven is hemp ability.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I think we saw the signage.
Yes, sir.
Brian, do we have it or do they have it or?
Yeah, hold on, chair.
Okay. This is the standard Montgomery Row signage allocated for the storefront.
So where is suite eleven?
I believe it's on the end next to the coffee shop.
Correct.
It's the last one before you hit the bank parking lot.
Yes, it's all the way in the back. So if you go in the entrance to the bank off of Livingston Street, it's on the very end of the building, the the last, the last tenant space there.
And there's all that Java and then you get into Hammer Town and the bookstore and so on. So. Two signs on the building and one on the door, four, four and one. Nothing on the morning and no lighting except for that lighting that's there. Anybody have any questions or comments about it?
I have one question. I see a discrepancy from the the application where it says the signage available is eleven square feet. And then in the letter to you, David, it actually says twelve feet is the maximum. I think it's probably just a typo. Well, I don't know which is correct, actually.
So the letter from Piper Woods as the landlord would be correct, more than likely. Either Mr. Spoletti or Timely Signs was one foot off and it's only an issue when if they're over. So obviously they're still under.
Right.
So I don't think there's an issue.
Here's my.
There shouldn't be an issue.
Here's my question about what what you will be doing in the store. Will it be just retail sales or you're making, you know?
So so Mr. Chair, Andrew is from Time and Timely Signs.
Oh.
He's he's not from hemp 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 ability. Let let me bring up Mr. Spoletti's letter.
Okay. I just want to know if they're going to be, you know, if you're making a hemp smoothie and eating, would there be tables, chairs? And is it a restaurant versus retail? That was a question. Farm and high property grow. Accountability range from base therapy. Products. All right. I just want to make sure it wasn't, you know, like marijuana laced brownies. They were eating something and then it would be, we want to know what their seating was and if they had tables and chairs that were going to consume something in the store. But if they're not, then it's just just like medical stuff that they're giving out and I guess just retail. Does anybody have any questions about it?
So as I understand the letter, they extract the THC at another location and by the time it gets to this store, it's only CBD products, right?
From Mr. Spoletti's letter, if that's what's explained, I would think so. I don't think Andrew can answer on behalf of the owner from timely signs.
Paul Biker told me when he spoke to the client, no THC products whatsoever. It was strictly just the CBD oil itself.
All right.
Or CBD oil products, but no THC ingredient in it.
I think the the village is still debating the idea of marijuana sales and active substances. So this doesn't cross that line.
So, yeah, we'll know about that in two hours. Yeah, I guess, you know, I just, you know, because you see a lot of the marijuana stores and they do have all kinds of cookies and candies and food, you know, and that. And I wanted to find out what what that letter explains everything. It's just really medication, holistic medication of sorts. Anybody have any other questions?
I think the signs look fine.
Yes, I agree.
We have a motion to approve the signage for hemp ability.
I'll make that motion. Jeff?
Do we have a second?
I will second that. Mike?
Okay, all's in favor, roll call vote. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Deb Christensen.
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye. Okay, tell them good luck and say hi to Paul for us.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is sixty-three eighty-four Mill Street LLC, Victoria. They want a year extension on the hotel because they're not ready to build as I understand.
Hi, everyone. It's not quite that they're not ready to build. They're still working out some of the conditions of approval. The engineer for the applicant has been working with the village engineer on the stormwater issues.
What issue?
Stormwater.
Of stormwater.
And it's been slow going because the engineers are so busy right now since COVID. They've all been overworked. And so it's not moving as quickly as we'd like, but it's it's in progress.
So I guess it's up to us to decide how long the extension should be. You're asking for years. Is that what? The town did six months and we did year a year or is that?
We we'd like to get a year under state law. It's you get a hundred eighty days for conditions, but your code reads differently than the state law. So a year would be good. It's it's six months. We'll just be back here in in May.
What I was thinking, it's all over again.
Is that a year till completion or a year till start?
Start.
Construction.
I think it's a year till you start.
Right. At this point, we don't even have a signed site plan because the conditions have not been satisfied.
All right.
Yeah, anybody else have any opinions about the year extension?
I'm fine with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for a year extension.
Do we have a second? Anyone?
I'll second that.
Okay, Michael seconds. A roll call vote. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Deb Christensen.
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye. Okay. And opening.
It's under construction still. There's not an opening date as far as I know, but it's it's looking really good.
It is.
Looks much better.
Yes, it's nice.
What a what an improvement.
Yes.
Warren's Warren's at the meeting, so you can thank him and his architectural skills for for making the building look so great.
Yeah, it looks nice. I'm just looking. I guess.
And I like the sidewalk, too. And that's great.
Yeah, I mean, we're working out like site details now about trying to connect the sidewalk on one property across the sidewalk to the sidewalk across the street and where that connection gets made. You know, there are certain details with DOT that are still in the works. So it's not quite there yet.
The strange angular corner and traffic that Bill goes bends around and I know, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll look forward to that opening maybe in the spring.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Victoria. The last item on the agenda is forty-six Livingston Street. We had a discussion last week. And I guess Warren is coming tonight to discuss recommendations to the three area variances.
Right. So at the the meeting with the planning board last time, we discussed the fact that even though the building's pre-existing, you know, it is where it is. We would technically need variances for both the side yard and rear yard or front yard and side yard, depending how we look at Mulberry Street. Those setbacks for the, you know, the property line and the the other issue is the size of the apartment, which again is based on the size of the existing building. We're pretty much at the twenty-five percent criteria for the house primary residence size, but we exceed the maximum size within that sort of minimum maximum range. So therefore, the the variance application is for both the yard setbacks and for the overall size of the unit. Since the the last meeting with the planning board, the the clients have engaged David Ryder, engineer, to look at the septic system, come up with the design that can get approved to take care of the house, the five bedrooms in the house, as well as the proposed bedroom within the carriage house. So that's sort of underway to that extent. And we discussed, I discussed with the the owners, they concerned about parking and they were perfectly comfortable with allocating one of the garage bays to either one of their vehicles or a tenant's vehicle. So as not to create a lot of parking congestion in the gravel drive there on the side of the carriage house. I think those are two.
A bed and breakfast, supposed bed and breakfast for a while. We had to put a parking lot behind the garage and the new owners have removed that and put a garden out there and put the fence up. So you'll be able to use the parking inside the garage. Brian, did we get your CEO to comment on this?
Yes, he provided comments to Warren, which is which is why Warren, they're moving forward with the side yard and rear yard variance request.
So, okay, so he wanted that done.
Yeah, I mean, if 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 the board would want it in writing, I can certainly certainly get something typed out from from Ken.
No, so so Ken felt it was enough that there's such a change to the building, as John Clark mentioned last time, that it's not an existing structure per se. It's more intensive use and.
Well, not only that, in the non-conforming use and buildings section of the code, any repair, restoration or alteration to an existing carriage house must receive zoning board of appeals approval before it can proceed.
Okay, so we should get try to put this together in a recommendation to the ZBA to make it clear to them why we would make, you know, positive or negative recommendations. We need have good backup, something from Ken in writing would be good to present to them. And whatever comments we have to feel, how does the board feel about this? I think we felt positively last time.
Just just to remind the board, we don't have anything from the engineer on the set the septic yet. And just so the board knows, on the taxed property card, this is a listed five bedroom. So with the addition of the bedroom in the accessory, the proposed accessory would make six bedrooms. So we don't know yet if the existing septic can support that. So just bear in mind from the board's standpoint that if you want to proceed, you're either proceeding without anything from an engineer or you can wait one more meeting to December seven and see if the engineer can provide something by then.
Well, we're not doing anything now. We're not doing anything now except making a recommendation to ZBA. Home of the ZBA meeting in December or January?
I mean, if if you make the recommendation tonight, they, Mr. Chair, you're you're almost compelling them to meet in December.
Then they wouldn't come back to us till January.
Correct.
You know, almost two months from now, we should have some clarification about that by then. Where we get to look at site plan. I I don't personally see any reason not to proceed with recommendations to the ZBA because we have two months until they would come back in January. And then if we still got our clarification, we'd have to wait then, but hopefully you will. Everybody else feel.
I think we should move forward with the recommendations.
So I need, okay, we got to this one. It's three variances. We got to do this one at a time. And we need a recommendation. Well, what is it? They don't have any numbers. Do we have numbers, Ryan? The side yard is how many feet? The rear yard is how many?
It's zero, Chair.
Zero. On both.
On 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 both.
On both?
On both.
The the document says front and side yard from ten foot to zero point three foot existing.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. In the village, the application for zoning variance document.
Right, there's dimensions came off the survey.
Well, why is the garage doesn't go all the way back? What are we talking front or rear yard?
I think you're talking about the the setback from the Mulberry Street boundary and the setback from the adjacent property boundary on Mulberry.
So it's not, it's not within the proper range for the front yard.
The front is on.
The front, yeah.
I think the front is considered Livingston, isn't it?
Right.
So it's the rear yard has a point three foot versus the required.
Ten feet.
Ten feet. And the side is zero. So let's I'll do a motion for the rear yard setback from ten to point three positive recommendation because of the existing nature of the structure.
Yeah, I mean, the structure is already there and that's a very good point, Sean. So does that mean that the application is a little bit misleading? The application says front and side yard from ten feet to zero point three feet. Maybe they were thinking when they filled out the form, the front was the front of the building.
But the front is the side of the building.
Which is Mulberry Street. Can you, Ryan, can you bring up the zoning application, the document that we received?
We're going to confuse the zoning board of appeals if we don't if we don't state each one of the, you know, what this is and what John's proposing, the point three rear yard setback, which is not her garden behind the garage, but the adjacent to the doctor's office.
Yeah, there you go.
I think it's it's rear and side yard variances.
So the side yard variance is Mulberry Street.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
They're not going to understand that. And they they want them one at a time. So you recommended a positive for these. Wait a minute, it's rear yard.
For the rear yard. That was the first one I did. Yes.
Rear and side. Side being Mulberry Street because that's the front of the garage, but it's the side of the property because because it's facing on Livingston Street. So John made a recommendation, a positive recommendation for the rear yard setback would mean abutting the doctor's office. And we have a second.
I'll second that, Suzanne Holzberg.
Okay, and now our our findings, which are very important to the zoning board of appeals, is that the building is already existing. It's not that the exterior isn't going to be altered in any way. Is that?
Another point, another findings I would cite is in the historic district overlay section, one twenty nine, one twenty dash thirty-nine D one talks about in order to maintain existing carriage houses, barns and other contributing accessory structures, conversion to active allowable uses should be encouraged, including consideration of any reasonable area variances. I would say that was directly applicable in this case.
All right, so we'll put that for both of them because I think Warren quoted that paragraph in some letter he sent out.
Right.
That we should be very flexible with this. So.
And I think it's also a factor that the building to the rear of the rear yard setback is also right on the property line. So there's no real conflict with the adjacent property, the use of the adjacent property.
I have to find a very skinny painter to paint the side of that.
Sorry, John. One more time, was that was that reference? One twenty dash thirty-nine B one?
D one.
D one. I think, okay, I think B one applies also.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Warren, Warren, D one, right.
Yeah, and I see D one, absolutely.
Right. It it's in the historic overlay. We should, Ryan, you should send that along with this to the ZBA. So they understand this.
Yes, I'll include the subsections, Chair.
Right, right, good. So a roll call vote. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Deb Christensen.
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye. Right, the second setback is now the side yard. It's the side yard. So it's a rear. That's wrong, that paper. It's it's a rear and now a side yard setback, which is Mulberry Street. It's right on Mulberry. So do I, we have a positive recommendation for the side yard setback. I'll make a positive recommendation for the side yard.
Yeah, I I think for the same reasons and also maybe just in parentheses, put, as you said, Mulberry Street so that the zoning people understand.
And you got to change that word from front to rear on the application there on the screen. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Jeff.
So Jeff seconds. So it's all the same reasons for variance number one. Okay, so roll call vote. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Deb Christensen.
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller. Aye. All right, variance number three. Now, the the rule is seven fifty square feet. Above that, it's supposed to be a two family. So we're we talked about this last time, that it's a big building. And it meets the criteria. The the building itself is a huge building, so the apartment is is under the maximum required, as Warren said before. But the square footage, the accessory apartment is considerably exceeds the existing. But again, quote it, we could quote, I think we could quote the same the same paragraph from the code. Someone want to make a positive or negative?
I I think I think also for the finding, something that Warren mentioned last week, it it would it would be somewhat difficult to partition, in other words, to make it small enough to meet the current code, they would have to partition off a portion of the floor and make it unusable, which would really be nonsensical, frankly. I think we should point out that the apartment is is only a single floor and that it will not require. and that um it will not require partitioning to um make, make a difficult living space and it will take advantage of the architectural features, i.e. all of the windows um in that unit.
I need a uh recommendation for a positive or negative recommendation for the third variance.
I'll make that recommendation.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, so do we have enough? We can use again the same paragraph that we need to be flexible with accessory buildings in the historic district, especially this one, which is marked as one of the most critically important uh garages, barns in the historic district.
And, and I, maybe we should just note that it's because it's a carriage house, it's been neglected from many, many uh owners. And now the new owners here want to bring it back to what it probably looked like and, and, and better. And it's just, you know, I think, you know, it's a, it's a good thing that, you know, we, we allow this because you don't want it to get to the point where Michael Bird's barn, that, you know, it was beyond saving.
Right, we don't want that to happen with this building. And it's great that it's happening and I believe Warren said they're going to be using the uh advantages of a, a registered historic landmark building to get some help from the state. And uh we should use as a case to convince other people who are concerned about expanding the historic district, what does it mean to them? Um, it means they can get some help by being a historic building, which they can get now because they are. All the new buildings in the, in the historic are on the state and federal historic registers. But uh I think this is, it is, I think we all think this is a great project.
Yeah, there aren't that many carriage houses left, especially ones that are right on a street like this. This is a wonderful building.
There's mine across the street too.
That's right. Um, and there's one over on uh, what is it? Beach and anyway, there aren't much. This is a real treasure, I think, this building.
And I was not aware that had horse stalls in the back. My, I have three horse stalls in my garage. And I was not aware they had horse stalls in that one too. But uh, okay, do we need a roll call vote for variance number three? Exceeding the maximum square footage allowed for accessory apartment. Uh, Michael G.
Aye.
Deb Christensen.
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Alright, so um, Ri- Ryan will set this up for the ZBA whenever they're available to meet. And then we'll come back for site plan approval after that. And hopefully all the issues with the septic will be um uh, and Michael brought up about, you know, now it's six apartments instead of five. What does it all mean? Um, uh, you know, and I was trying to get clarification on that, so that, that'll be good. Are you wanting to try to do something with the roof to stop uh snow from getting in over the winter?
Right, right.
Turbent, right.
Yeah, that's great.
I just want to chime in and say thank you. I'm in my car, so I can't have my camera on, but um, thanks for your consideration with this project.
No, it's a wonderful thing, you know, that, 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 that building, that building needs to be saved. It's very, very critically important.
We, we have, we have shorted up already. We put um support beams in and tarped over parts of the roof that were leaking. So we did that last winter. We need to do it again if we go through another winter because there's some holes that are reemerging, but we're, we're, we're trying to keep it from falling down, you know?
Okay.
So, thank you.
Yeah. Alright, good luck with the ZBA.
So Warren, um, just looking at the calendar, December sixteenth.
Okay.
If we can get a quorum.
Right.
Um, for the ZBA, hopefully it won't be too close to the, the holidays, uh, but we will do our level best. So it would be December sixteenth, um and it'll be a little change of forum, um because of the ZBA uh will be meeting in person.
Right.
So uh, we will see you then Thursday night and I will send out the notification. Um just before we leave off this app- app- application, I just um, and sorry for the poor joke, not to beat a dead horse. Um, but if for some reason the septic comes back and there, it cannot support six bedrooms, do you want to have the uh, uh applicant try to come back December seventh? Or do you think there's the ability to maneuver around this where they could still go to the ZBA? For their variances?
They still can go to the ZBA. And we can deal with the septic um during site plan.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, have a good Thanksgiving, Warren.
Thank you, yep.
For Christmas, hopefully. But we have to discuss that. We have to see what our agenda looks like. We usually don't meet Christmas week. Um, but uh, we'll have to see how many, many of us are going to be around on the twenty-first. If we want to meet, if Ryan comes up with an agenda, we'll make some decision.
We'll have to finalize that December seventh.
Right.
Chair and really uh see what's, what's forecasted and, and you know, what, what is tentative. Um I had, I received some good news um from uh Chrissy, uh, the minutes recorder. Um, I, fingers crossed here, um, knock on wood, December seven, we should have three drafts of uh minutes, so.
We can get them a few days early so we can look at them over that weekend.
Yes, I'm hoping, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to have um that uh something will be, be in my possession um before Thanksgiving or soon after.
Okay, good. Bringing mind on that. Um, if we, we're going to talk about some personnel matters, unless somebody has something else to talk about. Um, I'd like to end the meeting and go into executive session.
Need a motion, Chair.
Alright, uh, I'll make a motion to uh adjourn the meeting. Have a second.
I'll second that.
All those, if maybe you can raise your hand for this one.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, just give me a minute here.